And the mics in the room are on for everybody in the audience. And let me bring Kathy in if she's here. Here's Kathy. And everybody, you're at the Board of Trustees meeting.
Are we ready?
Yes, here comes Kathy. Take away.
I call this meeting of the Syo Township Board of Trustees to order at 7:01. We are holding this meeting in person, but we are still operating under the Washtenaw County's emergency order, and this extends the option for members of the Board of Trustees to participate and vote remotely. The Board has also decided to extend this option to members of the public for purposes of viewing and to make public comments. When the clerk calls the roll, those members of the Board of Trustees who are present at Township Hall need only indicate that they are present. If you are participating remotely, please state so and indicate your location by the municipality. Clerk Flintoff, please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Present.
Palmer?
Present.
Flintoff, present. Corte?
Present.
Jerome?
Present.
Noel?
Present, Syo Township, Washtenaw County.
Vogel? Vogel is absent. We have quorum.
Thank you. Next item is adoption of the agenda. And I have a couple of comments on the agenda. I learned late today that the contract with Washtenaw County for creation of a historic district, which is item H3 in the consent agenda, is actually not the next step in that process that we've begun. Instead, we should adopt a resolution to authorize the county to initiate the process. So I therefore propose an amendment to the agenda to remove item H3 and add a resolution, which I sent late today to members of the Board of Trustees. And because it wasn't in the meeting packet, and it's not very long, when we get to that item, I would propose to just read it aloud so that everyone knows what it is that we're voting on. And I would add that to...
Okay.
And I will also propose to move item K, the second public comments item, to occur prior to item J2, the possible action to consider purchase or lease of real property in closed session. So this, together with allowing public comment on any topic under the Board's purview during the first public comment, should ensure that we have accommodated all commenters before we go into closed session. Are there any other amendments to the agenda?
A small one. D2, I'd like to eliminate special meeting minutes of August 17th. Unfortunately, was not able to get those to you today. Tomorrow is my deadline, and so we'll have them out, and they'll appear on the September 14th meeting agenda.
Okay. Are there any other changes? If not, is someone ready to move adoption of the agenda?
I'll move the agenda as amended.
Support.
So moved by Jerome, support by Palmer. Please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Corte?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Yes.
Agenda adopted as amended.
That brings us to approval of minutes. So we're considering just one set of minutes, that would be the minutes from the August 10th regular meeting. Are there any amendments to or additions to the minutes?
I had one correction that Jackie was kind enough to point out to me today. On page 1, under D1, it was just Jerome that stated he would abstain on the July 10th meeting, and so it's just Jerome abstaining, not Corte. And Jerome, in fact, Corte voted yes. I verified Corte was in fact present at July 10th. We conferred, and I understand that I misinterpreted her hand at that time, so it is corrected.
Okay, are there any other additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, would someone like to move approval of the minutes as amended? Moved by Palmer?
Support.
Support by Corte? Oh, I'm sorry. And I should always look back to the back of the room to see if, whether you want to participate at some point. All right, well, in that case, can we call the roll?
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Corte?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Minutes are passed as amended.
Okay, that brings us to communications to the Board of Trustees. And I just want to make a brief comment. During our August 17th special meeting, there was some heated discussion of a particular communication to the Board of Trustees related to the township's budget and finance functions. And I want to thank Clerk Flintoff for including that in the packet for tonight's meeting. Everyone can now read that communication in the attached chart and judge it for themselves. I want to make clear that it is perfectly appropriate for any Syo Township resident or taxpayer to take an interest in the township government, that we should welcome substantive input, even if we disagree with it, perhaps especially when we disagree. So with that, are there any other comments about communications to the Board of Trustees?
Just a procedural reminder for my colleagues. We're getting some political information, something from the Democratic Party to townshipboard@sytowatch. So anybody who has contacts there, please ask them to just use personal emails.
I wondered about that. Let's see. That brings us to reports. And tonight we have a report... Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped over an important step here. Excuse me. Public comments. This is the time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matters under the purview of the Board of Trustees. Later, the supervisor will ask for public comment on each item on this agenda for possible action. If your public comment is on a possible action item, then you may comment later when that item is discussed by the Board, or if you prefer, you may speak on that action item now. You only have one turn to comment per item. There will be another opportunity for public comment toward the end of the meeting. If you are participating remotely, I ask that you raise your Zoom hand to be recognized. If you are participating in person, you may approach the table when it is your turn. Trustee Jerome has agreed to serve as timekeeper.
Sure.
I should have checked with you. And he will announce when there is 30 seconds remaining, and then time up. Out of fairness, please stop speaking when your three minutes are finished. I would ask that no one be interrupted during his or her comments. Members of the public will each be given one opportunity to address the Board of Trustees. Although we cannot help but have some repetition, please try to avoid reiterating the same points which were made by the previous speakers, and please do not involve personalities. Be as factual as possible. Public comments are not an opportunity for back and forth dialogue. However, at their conclusion, a member of the Board of Trustees may ask for recognition from the moderator to respond to a question of fact. To the trustees, I would add the reminder that we too should avoid personalizing our comments or ascribing motives to others. We are responsible for listening respectfully. That means our facial expressions and body language should not communicate either agreement or disagreement with what other speakers are saying. Neither should we make sounds or speak to show support to others' comments. When we are in a roll call for votes, it is time to say yes or no. The addition of further comments is not appropriate when the vote is underway. Now, are there any members of the public who would like to comment?
Yes, we have 29 members of the public in attendance. I want to briefly read who's here because members of the public cannot see, and multiple members of the public have asked me who's here. So briefly, Susanna Murdy-Demasi, Steve Wygowski, Sandra Egler, Rob Pattinson, Rebecca, Pat Stein, Pam Boyd, Misty Bolt, Michael Lessig, Mary Gillis, El Murdy, Lisa Pappas, Jonathan Greenberg, Joe Pattinson, Gillian Kay, Janet Madah, iPhone, George Benson, Doug Cavamey, Doug Armstrong, Diane B., David Reed, Bob Hyde, Bob lowercase, Barbara Bolt, Anne Catherine Humitt, Andy Hood, Andrea Garrett, and Peter Davis. With his hand up is Peter Davis. Peter?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Peter?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I want to begin by saying I'm concerned about the township's supervisors limiting the public comment session. I don't know why we have to have this long introduction before public comments can be delivered. After he was elected, he reduced the public comment time from five minutes to three minutes. And last week, after the meeting had been concluded, I went back and I watched the recording and listened to it. And Will Hathaway spent five and a half minutes, five and a half minutes, giving instructions, cautions, warnings to the members of the public before they could begin to speak for only three minutes. I think that's not fair. I want to speak tonight about a subject that I've never spoken about before, and that's these letters by Alice Owens. I don't know who she is, but I'm very troubled by her participation in township financial matters, something that she, as far as I know, has no legal right to become involved in to the extent that she apparently is involved in. Her two emails that I have in my hand, I looked at for the first time tonight, are very troubling. I don't know what her motive is. I don't know what she wants the township to do, but she certainly wants the township to do something for her, it seems. I don't know if it involves property, action or inaction or something. She states that she's spoken with various people, but the only person she has spoken to who should be included is our clerk, Jessica Flintoff. She was excluded from the meetings where she spoke with the treasurer and other people. She's involved, the county treasurer and others that, I don't know why she's involved them. She's prepared this chart, this bizarre chart called the Syo Finance Department Reporting Chart. I have no idea why this chart was generated or what the purpose of it is. I just suggest that her involvement with the township be scrutinized and that we proceed with caution in involving her in any way. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Next up is David Reed, followed by Gillian Carey. David?
Yes, David Reed, 713 Merrow Way. Last week's board meeting was troubling. Up for discussion was a proposal to approve the job descriptions for the supervisor and, oddly enough, township administrators. Odd because the administrator's job description had been approved by a 7-0 vote at the previous board meeting. However, this job description that was up for discussion had some apparent minor changes from the already approved description. Seemingly minor changes that had a major effect. What is troubling is that some of the members who voted for the proposal seemed not even to notice the changes, had no questions, and had no comments. Not what I would expect from an independent board member. Today, after reading the letters of concern from Ms. Alice Owens in tonight's packet, I am worried about the future of the township. The letters describe Ms. Owens' efforts to affect the township's future by consulting with the supervisor, the treasurer, and a staff member while excluding the third member of the executive team, the clerk. At the board's last meeting, this situation was discussed, and the supervisor defended his meeting with a non-resident who was trying to shape the future of the township. More troubling is the fact that both the treasurer and the staff member denied meeting with Ms. Owens. While there may not have been an actual meeting, according to Ms. Owens' own statements, these folks all participated in an effort to shape the township through the exclusion of the clerk and create a structure that quite possibly might be illegal. There is some question that bringing together both the budgeting process and the financial reporting responsibility under one person may violate state law and lead to financial mismanagement. That's yet to be determined. Ms. Owens' letters contain accusations of repeated violations of the Meetings Act, but cite no examples. Allow me. One glaring example of an OMA violation was a meeting held by the supervisor with the Washtenaw County Road Commission to discuss the proposed special assessment district, meeting at which the supervisor barred all interested parties from attending. That sounds like an OMA violation. Absent from Ms. Owens' letter of concern is the fact that the supervisor proposed limiting citizens' comments at board meetings to only those citizens who were in attendance, completely excluding any citizen who legally attended through Zoom. That sounds like an OMA violation, but fortunately, that did not pass. Most egregious was the Board's effort to alter history by changing the minutes of a meeting because certain phrases from citizens' comments were not acceptable to them. While the minutes were restored at the next meeting, the mere fact that the Board actually voted to violate the First Amendment rights is outrageous. This was not mentioned in Ms. Owens' letter of concern. I am curious about the motivation behind Ms. Owens inserting herself into the formulation of Syo Township's administrative structure. It is curious because Ms. Owens does not live in the township, but does happen to own a parcel that abuts a proposed large development of the township. One wonders. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next up is Gillian Carey. Gillian?
Hello? Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Okay. It's going back and forth. Good evening, 153 Luella Avenue. I have read through from the last meeting through Supervisor Hathaway's, excuse me, Supervisor Hathaway's statutory duties, and it just didn't sit right with me. So I spent most of today going through, and I have found a lot of issues here. So I have written this up. I have cited evidence, and I will submit this to the Board.
Hello?
Hello?
Go ahead, Gillian.
Okay. So I will submit this to the Board. There is a lot that is taken straight from Charter Township Superintendent duties, and there's, actually, there's a couple duties that were left out. So what's concerning for me is not so much that Supervisor Hathaway did this. I am not surprised. I'm really surprised that very few people on the Board has questioned this and just blindly accepted it. Is this going to be the way of our Board is just to vote yes because somebody wants you to? Or are you going to question what is actually going on? It's concerning. I'm very concerned for our township. Thank you.
Thank you, Gillian. I see no other interested public. Will?
Now, it's time for reports.
I'm sorry, there was one more. Will jumped up, sorry. I saw a hand by Rob Pattinson. Excuse me. Rob?
I had no, Rob Pattinson, 500 North Zeeb. I had no intention of speaking during this segment. I've lived across the street from Alice Owens for 45 years. I hope that the public will understand that her heart is in the right place. She is trying to help the township with her vast experience in municipal finance. She's an attorney. She is of the utmost integrity and honor, and I hope that people will understand that she's trying to help, and there is no nefarious issue here. And I am appalled that her trying to help could be misinterpreted the way it has been, and it's extremely unfortunate. And I hope the public will know that she's trying to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Next up is Pat Stein. Pat? Pat?
Can you hear me?
Yes, hi.
Hi, good evening. Pat Stein, switching Hurricane South Zeeb Road. I want to make a comment about Mr. Pattinson and his comments about Alice Owens. It's nice that he wants us to think so highly of her, but you can't help but be concerned with the suspicious back room, back door, underhanded way that this was all handled. So, sorry, Rob, we can't agree with you on that. On the next note, Ms. Trustee Corte, would you please raise your microphone? We never hear you vote, and I think you should be proud of your vote and let us all hear. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat. I was just passing Jackie a note about that to my colleagues here. If you can speak up, that'd be great. If anybody needs an extra mic and there's space, just let me know.
Thank you.
And a reminder to everybody joining, please keep yourselves on mute when you're not speaking so that we avoid feedback. And that is all the public comment. Will?
Are we sure?
We are.
Okay, I don't want to cut anyone off. Okay, reports. We have with us this evening a representative from the Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office. Welcome.
Lieutenant Hunt.
Lieutenant Hunt. I was gonna say Alan.
Good evening.
Good evening, Alan. You're on camera.
All right. It's nice to see everybody.
Good to see you in person.
It's nice to see y'all, too. So just some short things from the last couple months' reports. Looks like we're finally getting our traffic stops back up to pre-pandemic levels, which is good. So a little more traffic enforcement in the area. The intersection down here at Jackson and Zeeb is still the, has the highest rate of accidents anywhere in the county. So month to month, that intersection is challenging for us, and so we're directing people down there.
Is there a type of accident?
Just basically all types, yeah. Mostly non-injury crashes, but...
I just wonder if it was related to Michigan U or something else? I'm sorry.
No, I think that's definitely part of it, just the design, and as busy as it is with the offering from the highway right there and everything else, just the design and positioning of that and the amount of traffic that we get through that intersection is essentially does it, so.
Do you... Oh, no, violines. Do you find it at, so, do you find it at the exit ramp and entrance ramp?
No, it's more, it's the intersection itself. But again, there's so much traffic coming in and out, you know, trying to get to one place or the other, that I think that helps definitely drive some of those numbers, so.
Thank you.
So, but again, we're getting our stats up there. No major incidents over the last couple months, no home invasions or anything like that. The one thing we have been experiencing a rash of, especially over the night shift, is larcenies from businesses, either whether it's vehicle break-ins where people are stealing tools from some of the local businesses along the Jackson Ave corridor, or we also have had several vehicle thefts from some of the dealerships along there. Primarily, kind of the main focus on the vehicles is often the high-end, high horsepower Dodge vehicles right now. There's groups of people that come out of Detroit and whatnot that steal those all over southeastern Michigan. And so the fact that we have a dealership here, they have not been immune. I think they lost three in one night, one night. So it's just, it's a common thing around, and usually they're getting recovered in Detroit or someplace else. We have had a couple of the instances we've had here where either a trailer was stolen or something along those lines that was full of tools, recovered the trailer in Detroit, all the tools missing. But again, it's not a lot of it, but it is probably the only real regular crime trend we've had in Syo for the last several months, so. Does anybody have any questions about any of the stats or anything from the reports? Reference bank hours or time or... So as far as banked hours right now, and we currently, you guys contract with us for eight deputies, and we have two vacancies that we're still holding out in Syo Township that we end up having to fill with overtime shifts, one on the midnight shift, one on the day shift. And because of that, we do end up having to bank dollars every month. And so what I have been trying to do is spend some of those banked hours on filling the unfilled midnight shift, even when it's not necessary, which the minimum is have one deputy out here on midnights. But according to the contract, we'd normally have two most days or at least three days a week. And so because of that, what I've been doing is filling that shift a little bit more frequently to help hopefully alleviate some of those issues at night along Jackson Ave where the people are coming in and breaking into the vehicles and taking either the tools or doing the auto thefts or whatever it might be. So hopefully give a little bit of more deterrence there by just having another car rolling around or another deputy present. So that's where some of those hours go as far as the hours used. And then additionally, on the weekends, having one deputy on day shift, again, they get extremely busy on the weekends, so where we have the hours, we've been filling some of those day shift times where it's really where our busiest hours is when you look at the crime stats and the metrics as to when the deputies are getting called to runs, spending those extra banked hours with an extra deputy on the weekends when possible to bolster that staffing level to make sure that those guys aren't just getting completely overwhelmed with, not that there's that much going on here, but again, calls run to run and taking care of things. But it definitely, I think, helps, and so. Or especially if something serious does happen, then it's always good to have more than one deputy working, so. So that's where the banked hours have been getting spent. Out of area time is still... Out-of-area time is still based on your geographic location being between two of our other contracts. Being that we've got Dexter-Webster contract just here north, and then the Manchester-Lodi contract with the sheriff's office just here south. Essentially, what happens is when a large incident occurs or something that's a significant officer safety risk, the deputies will get pulled from one direction to the other. They're coming into your township at times, but then they're also getting pulled out. But because you're right in between, you're sandwiched in between, looking at your numbers, that doesn't quite even out because you're going both ways versus if you look at it, how much time the Dexter deputies spend coming into Syo and the amount that the Syo deputies go into Dexter. I want to say it's even, but it's relatively much closer than the numbers would show from just into and out of if you look at that number individually. And then the same thing with the Lodi Township contract. So we get pulled that way sometimes. Occasionally even, you know, if the guys are down in Manchester, they'll be coming up here to help. So that's kind of where the into and out-of-area time is for you. So that helps kind of clarify that so you have an understanding of what's happening. But then again, we send you the breakdown of that so you can see exactly why people are getting sent where, and we try to put that information in a log so that you have that available if you need it or are interested in that particular facet of things, so. Recently received a message from Will regarding a couple of concerns within the township, one being the new parks that you guys are putting in and the parking areas that you have in place there. Making sure that our, especially because we do have some newer deputies that are working in the area, making sure that they know where those locations are so that they're spending time, especially in the evenings. My experience, having worked in Superior Township for many years and that a number of the same kind of things, little preserve parks and little parking lots that are kind of isolated and out of the way. Times we really have issues there is usually in the evening. People, whether it's kids or people going in there at night. Just making it as clear, making sure it's clearly posted what the hours are so that when people can or cannot be there, I think is important. But then also on our side of things, making sure that all the deputies are spending time traveling through those areas and just kind of being seen in there. And, you know, when people see or you come across folks, the word gets out, especially if it's the kids or the juveniles that are out there doing whatever they're doing. They know that, hey, sheriff's in this lot all the time, so you don't want to be here. Find someplace else to be. So we'll make sure we're kind of staying on top of that for you. But I think the signage and posting of the hours is pretty important. That helps us out.
And they should be posted at all. And I would just, I'm sure Supervisor Hathaway might have mentioned it, but particular attention to Dino Drive, which is at the end and really has relatively little vehicular traffic with the exception of business traffic. Should be an area of focus as well.
Yep, absolutely. I'll pass that along to the guys, so for sure. And then there was some discussion about the noise complaints from the Misty Farms, Misty Valley area down on Syo Church Road. And looking at the stats, we have had any complaints come to us from there recently. But I would encourage you, if you're receiving complaints from people within the township that are going directly with you, to encourage them or educate them to call us immediately. Because if they call us immediately, we'll always send a deputy out, and we'll go out and we'll talk to them. In the past, they've been fairly responsive to our concerns because generally we just don't go out there and write people tickets for the noise violation or whatever it might be. We'll try to educate them first, and they've always been responsive, is my understanding, over the last several years after having discussions with them about taking care of that when that happens. But it also then allows us to track that in our system so that we can, if it does, if we're constantly getting it over and over and over again, and how many times are we going out there, then it's much easier to track. But if the complaints are coming to you and then not coming to us, because by the time it gets to us, it's done and over with because it's probably a day or so old. And so it's better if we can get out there immediately, look at it, address it, and then go from there. So same thing with the parking along the road in that area. If we don't hear about it directly at the time it's occurring, then it's hard for us to really address it other than just essentially being hearsay. So, but if we can do that, we can document it and then have something that if it becomes a continuing issue or problem and a real problem, then we can definitely assist you in moving forward with any kind of additional enforcement action if we have to.
Lieutenant Hunt, you can't see, but Trustee Noel behind you has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. My question is a follow-up regarding Misty Valley and our noise ordinance in general because I have received complaints from residents that people are getting inconsistent information from the county sheriff deputies on our noise ordinance. And I want to be sure the deputies are getting specific instructions or education so that they know Syo does have a noise ordinance. We're working on a new one, and we're going to be talking to you as soon as the new one is enacted. But we do have one right now.
Yeah, and I'm aware of that. And so, but I believe it also requires an actual decibel reading. Is that correct? From my recollection?
Yes.
And so that becomes the challenge because again, when we have deputies working overtime or whatnot, they don't necessarily, if they're coming in from other areas, they don't necessarily know that we have a decibel meter sitting in the office that they could go potentially pick up and then make that measurement. And so some of that may be some of that inconsistency because we are very short-staffed still, and I can talk about that in a minute. And the other thing is we also have several of our positions are being filled with what we call recruit, not recruit deputies, but new deputies that are still on probation. So they're continuously rotating through different positions throughout the county. So they don't always have a full understanding of a particular area before they leave. But part of the purpose of that program is to get them that information and to pass that on to them. So that's definitely something that I can bring up to them and make sure that the newer guys are aware of. But again, not everybody, you know, some guys spend their entire career on the east side of the county and not necessarily hear what they're doing overtime out here. And so it's hard to keep track of all the nuances of all the various townships and which, whose ordinance says what and who has what equipment. And so when you're doing things a little bit different in one area versus another, it can pose challenges for us.
But one thing that may be helpful at Misty Farm, Misty Valley, is they have a security person in their employee who is onsite with a decibel meter to sort of track their events. So when they're having an event, he's, I think, he is keeping track of, you know, at the property line, what the readings are.
Okay.
So if there's any question, whoever's coming from the sheriff's office could presumably seek out that individual, the security person, and ask, you know, what the readings are.
No, you say this, I was not aware of that, so.
Well, it's kind of unusual. It's one of the conditions on their use of that,
That property.
Of that property for this purpose.
Okay. No, that's good, and I'll pass that along as well so that people have that extra information, so. Any other questions?
I have a question. Speaking of the auto thefts along Jackson Boulevard, these people are, they're professionals. My take on what you said, and they must already know there's only one car going up and down that boulevard.
A lot of times it is groups, it's organized groups. It'll come out in different areas, and it's usually out of, you know, the Detroit area is where a lot of the car theft is focused at. And so, but they'll come out and they'll basically radiate out to different locations in the area. And it's usually a coordinated group where they'll have lookouts. And so they'll have people posted up, and if they see you around at that moment, then they don't do anything. But then, you know, when you're, or they'll even scan our radios. And so they'll be scanning, you know, where we're at, what's going on. And if everybody's going to one location, that's a good opportunity for them to do whatever they're going to do. Or another one, a common time that happens with like the wheel thefts. We haven't had any wheel thefts recently, but it's common with the dealerships to have various wheel thefts, the high-end wheels on cars. They'll do it at nights when it's raining, heavy rain. They'll go out and do it then because they think, oh, the police aren't going to come out if it's raining. Or it's, it actually, it does obscure your view. It's harder to see when you're driving through those lots. You won't notice people as easily, but it conceals them. And then they've got their whole strategy and their techniques and their tactics for doing all that kind of stuff. So again, it's just up to us to try to deal with it as best we can, so. But actually, one of our deputies, sorry, one of our day shift deputies was assigned to the Michigan State Police Auto Theft Task Force for some time. And actually, he's actually supposed to be in that position now, but because we're short-staffed, he was pulled out of that detective position and then placed in a regular rail patrol position until we get our staffing situation a little bit better for us, so. So we have that expertise. So it's great to be able to talk with Doug whenever we have any kind of auto theft type issues. He knows everything about it. And then he also has his state police resources, the guys that he worked with, that he can always run things by and has access to certain databases and information that the average deputy would not have. So we actually have a very good resource here for assisting with those kind of issues, so.
Additional questions?
Just following up on Trustee Noel. So you all actually have a decibel meter?
Yes, we do. Yep.
I'm just, I hear the challenge of lots of people rotating in and out. I'm wondering if there, is there something more we can do to support, you know, clear communication when this new noise ordinance comes out so that people are aware of what the requirements are?
No, again, certainly as soon as it does come out, I'll push it out to all of our staff so that they're aware of it. But at the same time, if you don't deal with it for a year because you work on the other side of county and now you're doing overtime over here one night, it's going to be really hard to realistically expect that person to remember every nuance of every ordinance of every township we have within the county. And we try to push that out, and we'll push that out in specific information. We'll give them little bulletins, and we give them like cards or basically information where they have, you know, this township has this, this, and this. And so they have resources available so that, say, they go, get sent to a call like that, they can pull that information up if they take a minute to look and say, hey, I can X, Y, and Z here. Because again, it's not only what you can do, but then which court does it go to? So we have to look all that information up. And so we give them cheat sheet resources to look up and find that. So just making sure that that gets updated when that information gets passed on and so that it's clear to everybody what it is initially. So they'll get that information, but then making sure that we're adding that to the resource packets that they have so that they can look that up if they do get called to something, so.
There are no further questions? Thank you.
The one thing I was going to mention is staffing, too, staffing as well. Like I mentioned, currently, we have like only three of our staff are essentially fully assigned to Syo Township. Of the five, you know, deputies that are, or six deputies that are assigned here, the others are newer deputies that are rotating, which is usually, has not historically been the case. Usually, the west side of the county, we get a lot of the more experienced seasoned deputies that are looking to go run and gun per se, you know, getting car chases every night on the east side of the county and all that kind of stuff. They're more interested in, you know, working with the community and slowing down a little bit towards the end of their career. So generally, those are the people that we have coming out on the west side of the county. But right now, we're about 50/50 between brand-new guys and senior staff. But we are still continuing to hire. I think the last number I saw, we're down 18 positions as far as deputy sheriffs out of about 100 or so positions. And we've got four people in the current Washtenaw Academy. Got one person in the School Craft Academy. The Washtenaw Academy graduates next month, the School Craft in October. So that's five more bodies that we're getting ready for training. But again, it takes about six months to get people trained up. We've got numerous people in the process. So again, it's a constant, trying to just catch up with bodies. And right now, again, law enforcement's, you know, in the news for not always the right reasons, and it's been a challenge. Even in the academy, I work for the Police Academy, and the academy numbers are down significantly. So the people that you're, once upon a time, you had an academy of 50 or 40 people, we're looking at academies at 20, 30 people. And so, and everybody's hiring right now, and everybody's fighting for the best people. And so it's a challenge for us for sure. But we're doing, we are lowering our standards because of that challenge. We're making sure that we're finding the best possible people for the job and people that we're looking for are good, well-rounded folks. And the people we've been getting, we've been very happy with and are looking good for the future, so.
That's good news.
Yeah, absolutely. Any other questions?
Yeah, I didn't want to cut you off, but if there are any more questions, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
It's good to see everybody. Take care.
Yeah, it's good to see you in person.
Yeah, exactly. That's the best part. So next, we have a report from the Utilities Director. There you are.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, good evening. So since I reported last, as you all know, we had quite a storm two weeks ago. And, you know, we lost power at most of our stations from early morning on Thursday, August 12th, through Friday evening. So we lost power at our Dino Drive pump station, at the Jackson-Wagner connection, at the water tower, at our Jackson Plaza booster station, and Liberty Road booster station. The Jackson pump station was operable and had power the entire time. So the other stations ran on generators during that time, and they ran very well. We were never in a problem with, you know, worrying about a basement backing up or supplying water to the community. So it was a good exercise. My staff, Rich Hughes and Matt Donikowski, worked long hours getting things set up and keeping things, keeping things running. So I really appreciate that. They did a good job on Little Sleep. During that event, totally unrelated, but we had a leaky gate valve at an apartment complex behind the Liberty Athletic Club. And it was a pretty good leak, and we couldn't get that shut down no matter how many valves we closed. But after many, many hours and a lot of driving around due to all the intersections being closed at that time, it was a nightmare to go a mile. We were able to get it closed down enough to, that we were supplying water to the customers, and we did a repair with the contractor on Saturday morning. So that was good. It was very rusted out, the gate valve. So we're going around looking at other vaults now to see if we have any that are in similar condition. You know, as I've mentioned before, the system is aging, and this is going to be more and more, more and more common. Matt Knapp resigned on July 30th. He was a utility technician. We have a great candidate that we're hoping to hire. We're waiting for the background check to be completed. And if that, everything comes out right, we'd like to make an offer and bring that before you at the next council meeting, the board meeting. We continue working with the Woodhill Group. There'll be a presentation later tonight by Michael Lessig to the Woodhill Group on new water rates so we can start turning our ship around, start putting money into proper accounts and spending it in the proper way. And then finally, we've begun mowing at the parks, the parking lots, and we're looking at equipment for park and pathways maintenance. So that's kind of exciting, and it's been very hot, though. So that's what I have. I'd like to answer any questions if there are any.
Are there any questions from members of the board?
I just want to thank you for addressing the parks because that really makes a difference in terms of the citizens' access and use of those areas. So we continue to work on them, and we thank you for that cooperation.
Great. Yep, thank you.
You did a great job, Steve. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next report is Gelman, Trustee Noel.
I wasn't planning on giving a report tonight, but something did happen today. Well, briefly state that Gelman has filed their motion for the Court of Appeals, and we have several weeks to reply to that, all of the interviewers. It's 50 pages long. I haven't read it yet. So that's really the only thing that I have to report on that's new tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Briefly, give a supervisor's report. I want to report on an ongoing issue. That's the waste hauling and recycling service in the township. So we're continuing to work on resolving service issues that occur with the township's single waste hauler, GFL Environmental. In a prior report, I shared information about the difficulty In a prior report, I shared information about the difficulty that GFL has had with hiring enough people to drive its trucks and staff its phones. This problem is real. We've recently heard that GFL is cutting back on service to individuals in favor of contracts it has with municipalities such as Syo Township. We've also heard that other service providers are facing similar labor force challenges. So on, on one hand, we're fortunate not to have a loss of service, but this doesn't excuse the service problems. And we are working here in the township on an online form to put on our website to gather GFL service information from Syo residents. The goal of this is to help determine whether there's a pattern of a particular kind of service gap. And we hope that once we have this up, this form up and running, that residents will help the township to document any problems so that we're in a better position to push GFL to make improvements. We're also working on supplementing the recycling service, the curbside recycling that GFL provides. And trustee Corte and I recently toured the Ann Arbor, Recycle Ann Arbor facility. It's located at the former Calvert's site on Jackson Road. There's an ongoing discussion with Recycle Ann Arbor about how to sort reestablish a service, a drop-off service for Syo Township that would supplement what GFL provides. And today, trustee Corte and I and one of our representatives to the Warma Consortium, Tom Hoth, toured the GFL's MRF, I think that's Materials Recycling Facility?
Recovery.
Recovery facility out near Metro Airport. And that was very informative and gave us an opportunity to talk directly with some of the GFL employees who work there. We're working to improve and expand the services while also finding ways to make Syo's recycling efforts more effective. And that's my report for this evening.
Noel, I had a quick question.
Sure.
On the GFL issue and resident complaints, I know that over the last 10 months or so, there've been a lot of resident complaints. Have we kept a record of all of those complaints?
We have a record in, in that we've converted all the complaints into emails, which I've usually been in the position, I'm the person who's been contacting GFL customer service and sort of pursuing a resolution of what those issues are. Part of the reason that we want to have an online form is it allows us to gather the data in a more organized fashion. What we realized when we wanted to go back and look at the records is that it's, it's kind of challenging to, to sort through the emails and create a, you know, a more organized kind of representation of the data. So going forward, I think we'll have a better record. But we do have a record. And I'm often going back because unfortunately, people will come back to the township and say, an issue still hasn't been resolved. And because we have it in email, it's possible to look up, you know, sort of pull up the record of what happened, you know, what the communications were before and, you know, whether we ever heard back from GFL customer service, so on. So it's a record of sorts. It's not as good a record as we're aiming to have in the future.
Okay.
Clerk Flintoff?
Sure, thank you. Briefly, I, along with all other clerks, are getting a whole bunch of, you know, politically motivated FOIAs, phishing attacks, all sorts of things. And I think it's because we're gearing up for 2022. So we're all collaborating with that. But thank you to Jim Murdy, our IT director, and to Mary Gillis, the deputy clerk. We are responding to all of those appropriately and keeping everybody safe. But I do expect the disinformation campaigns to pick up as we near August and November of 2022 in Michigan. So again, be smart consumers of information. If you ever hear anything about Syo Township, call township hall and find out if it's true. Secondly, I want to share that at our last board meeting of August 17th, the board took two actions through the adoption of a single resolution to adopt the job descriptions of the supervisor and the township administrator. I, I and trustee Noel, we voted against these actions. I did my best that I could to be really specific about my objections, my legal concerns, and to clearly declare my lack of consent. Yet it passed with a five-person majority, and so it is now board policy. And I feel compelled to let my colleagues and importantly, residents, know that I declare that I believe that these two actions are contrary to my statutory duties as your township clerk, that if they were put into effect, I believe that at least two state laws would be broken, and therefore I will not be abiding by these actions. Instead, I will follow the statute. Prior to the last special board meeting, the only board members who reached out to speak with me about the supervisor's proposal were the supervisor himself, the treasurer, and trustee Noel. And during these conversations, I was extremely clear about my opposition and the specific and well-reasoned bases for my opposition. Trustee Corte and I are having coffee tomorrow, I'm assuming it's coffee because it's morning, to speak more about township finances, and I'm looking forward to that. I would welcome a conversation with trustee Jerome at your convenience, member of the Budget and Finance Committee, as well as a conversation with trustee Vogel. Collectively as a board, we have educated ourselves a lot. And four folks here are new to the board. We have had two governance academies specifically on township finances. The videos are available, one on finances and the other on debt. Also, the board has been fortunate to have the expertise of Woodhill Associates over the last year to bring some expertise outside of the township to the area and to correct several areas. And the Budget and Finance Committee remains a public forum to bring issues and work through them for over two years. So I want to encourage everybody to continue the education and the dialogue in whatever informal or formal ways that they take. And I hope to speak with my colleagues more on September 1st, Wednesday, September 1st at 3:30 at the Budget and Finance Committee to talk about some possible ideas about how we can continue to discuss and learn about these issues together. That's all.
Next is the treasurer's report.
Lots of tax payments coming in. And that's about all I've been doing for almost, well, going out this week so far. So I've done some revamping of a report that I used to give, and I hope to have that so that it's just a clear, simple report for the board. Takes time when you have to do it. Go get them.
Thank you. Trustee Corte, Planning Commission?
Thank you. So I wanted to correct a statement that I made last time about public comments on the master plan. The public comment period closed on August 23rd. That was technically for our neighboring communities and that we have also opened to residents. However, there is still opportunity for resident public comment continuing as we are working on the final revisions on the master plan. And there will be more public comment opportunities at a hearing on the master plan. And the, the hope from the Planning Commission is that we will schedule a joint meeting with the Board of Trustees to go over the final draft of the master plan, highlighting all the revisions that were made and offering that opportunity for public comment. So I would like to talk with colleagues as well as Mr. One from CWA to make sure that we can set a mutually agreeable time with the Planning Commission to go through the master plan, which should be fairly soon. I didn't get a sense of how soon they would be able to process. There were some late comments that came in.
I think a joint meeting is a great idea.
So what would be the best, what should we try to do? Do the poll from us and them? Should we try to identify some dates first? What's the best way for us to try to schedule?
Could we all show up at the next Planning Commission date?
Well, I think-
I'm just throwing it out.
If, if the Planning Commission has a preference for when it would like to hold its public hearing, I, my sense was there, you had a meeting on the 13th of September, is that correct?
Right. The concern is that depending on what other things come up, we might not want to do it at one of our regular meetings. We might want to do it at a special meeting or something.
Ah, I see.
And I don't, I don't know what's on the agenda for the 13th.
Well, we do have to do a doodle poll for special meetings for the Board of Trustees or other purposes. So we could just, we could just confer with the Planning Commission and find some dates to add into the mix and find out how many dates line up and then sort it out from there.
If, if I may, as a practical suggestion, if there is one body whose regular meeting date we could start with, that would cut out half of the variables.
I will see what our agenda looks like for our next regular meeting because obviously that would be easiest.
I know 9:14 is full for us, Will. I don't know about 9:28.
Yeah, I think it's easier probably to, to do it on the Planning Commission because you guys have to hold a public hearing by statute.
Right.
So it really should be a Plan, Planning Commission meeting as the starting point.
Okay, that's a good point. I will check and see whether we can schedule it for one of the next two.
If not, then maybe elicit some, some dates for a special meeting.
Okay. And that's the major news from the Planning Commission. I mean, obviously, we keep working on reviewing site plans as they come to us, but the master plan has been the big effort.
And then the Land Preservation Commission?
The property that we discussed in closed session last time now has a signed purchase agreement. So I'm pleased to say that we will be working on preserving 110 acres of farmland on Wagner. And just a side note, this property was the highest scoring property in the state for the agricultural land preservation grants. And it was one of the highest ranked in the federal grant scoring process as well, which emphasizes to me the importance of preserving prime agricultural land near population centers. And also, the work of the Land Preservation Commission has, and their consultant, Mary Monique, has just been excellent and been really working with landowners and finding the opportunities, putting them together. So just wanted to offer some recognition and gratitude to our Land Preservation Commission.
Awesome. Congratulations, everyone. I know this, that particular parcel's been a goal for the Land Preservation Commission for a long time.
Long, high, high priority property that we've been working at for years.
For this, Paula, can you describe where it is?
Probably not yet, can you? Well, I think we are able to-
Yeah, yeah.
But, but, excuse me, excuse me. You have more insight on that than I do.
I mean, essentially, the property is the parcel that runs, it's actually three parcels that runs from the corner of Wagner and Liberty to Wagner and Syo with the exclusion of certain properties down where the barn is and the like. But it's, it's the preponderance of the area across the Washtenaw District buildings. It's a substantial 110 acres with an original farmhouse across from the-
House.
Plant, asphalt plant.
And it doesn't include the actual corner piece, but it sort of starts-
No, just beyond that.
Just beyond that. Where the sidewalk ends.
Yeah. As Charles Silverstein would say, yes.
Yeah.
Been reading that a lot.
Well, thank, thank you. We are, Board Rep to the Transportation Alternatives, Planning Committee is not present this evening, so we'll skip that report and go to the Parks Advisory Board.
For Parks, we had an onsite meeting last week with regards to final plans for the Marshall Road Park. We had some suggestions and finalized some of the amenities. We're providing that will be presented in a revised site plan, hopefully, or for our next meeting so that we can move forward with some of those final things that we're trying to provide for the Marshall Road Park.
And the broadband task force?
On broadband, I will trumpet this once again. So September 1st will be the BOC meeting, the Board of Commissioners meeting, where the request for broadband gap filling funds will be considered. To date, we've had over 179 individual organizations that have sent personal stories to the task force in support of this. Please feel free to attend that meeting. In addition, they've also created a survey, which is trying to set priorities for the American Rescue Plan funds. I will, I, I talked to Jessica, Clerk Flintoff, just prior to this, my apologies. And we will provide a link. It is lengthy, and I'm not going to try to share it here. But please participate and attend the September 1st. We really want to get this broadband in place, and we're, we're so close to that finish line. So that's the update.
Thank you. Actually, it's a good suggestion from Clerk Flintoff. There's, there's a decision at the recent meeting of the Transportation Alternative Planning Committee that may be of interest to some of those in attendance this evening, in, in case people haven't already heard. In response to concerns that were raised in board meetings from the public earlier this summer, we asked the TAP Committee to review the concept of the Honey Creek Pathway. And the TAP Committee voted at its recent meeting to remove the Honey Creek Pathway concept from the pathway network, the larger pathway network map. And so that concept is, is sort of off the table. Instead, the TAP Committee is going to look for other ways to create connectivity for pedestrians and cyclists to that northeast quadrant of the township. So if there are people who have ideas, suggestions for that, please direct them to the TAP Committee, the Transportation Alternative Planning Committee. But that, that's probably the biggest recent decision by the, or, or action by the TAP Committee. Obviously, it's a recommendation to the Board of Trustees, but I don't think there's, you know, going to be any difference of opinion with the TAP Committee on this subject. With that-
Well, I have a follow-up question on that.
Oh, sure.
I think that's great news, but I'm thinking that Syo Township also has an affirmative responsibility to contact Google Maps, follow up on the fact that this has been removed so that they know to remove it. Because it could remain on Google Maps for years, even though we've removed it from our master plan. So I think we need to do more, is what I'm saying. And I believe, I watched that TAP meeting. There were suggestions at the TAP meeting for our township attorney to get involved, to reach out to Google. I don't know what the process would be, but I, I think that we have some loose ends here that have to be followed up on.
Yeah, I, I'm still baffled by this whole thing with the, you know, a concept from one of our plans making its way onto Google Maps. But I have seen some email traffic. I know that there are efforts underway to try and resolve that, whatever it is. I still haven't seen it myself, but I've heard descriptions of it. And I agree with you. We don't want anything out there that sort of encourages people to trespass on private property. So we'll, we'll keep after that and see if we can resolve it. So with that, we're now at our consent agenda. And before we approve the consent agenda, I want to draw attention to a couple of things. First, I just want to mention two appointments that are included in the consent agenda. One is Steve Kern to the TAP Committee, and the other is- One is Steve Kern to the TAP committee, and the other is Lisa Pappas to the Land Preservation Commission.
They're both in attendance.
Oh, they are?
Uh, I'm sorry.
Oh. So we welcome both Steve and Lisa, this is sort of new involvement. And that brings us to a couple of, of long-term individuals who've been involved with the township.
Come up to the table, guys.
Yeah, come on up to the table, pull up a chair. And for these, for this, I would like to read the, actually, the resolutions honoring these individuals. First, Bill Ailey has devoted, whereas Bill Ailey has devoted his time, energy, efforts, and talents to the Township of Syo for more than 30 years, and whereas Bill Ailey has a strong commitment to public service and places high priority on customer service and taking care of whatever is required, and whereas Bill Ailey has gained the respect and friendship of his coworkers in the Syo Township offices, in part due to his always surprising and often challenging wit, and whereas Bill Ailey came to the rescue of the voters of Syo Township when, during the pandemic of 2020, he created and executed transparent barriers for the township's polling places to help enforce social distancing mandates, and whereas Bill Ailey and his wife will be moving to a rural county in the Upper Peninsula, living across the road from a state park, and anticipate snowmobiling to his new job, and whereas Bill Ailey built his dream retirement home in the Upper Peninsula with his own hands, and whereas Bill Ailey will be sadly missed by all his coworkers, and whereas it is appropriate at this time to highlight Bill Ailey's many achievements and contributions, and to extend to him special recognition and commendation for a job well done, as he has dedicated his professional life to the service of others in Syo Township. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Township of Syo Board, Township of Syo Board of Trustees does hereby extend its deep gratitude and appreciation, and commends Bill Ailey for his 30 years of dedication and unselfish service to the Township of Syo and its citizens, and wishes him good health and happiness in his retirement. If everyone was unmuted, we'd be hearing applause from across the internet.
And if they were on video, they'd be doing the wave.
Yeah. So the second resolution is in appreciation of James Murdy. Whereas James Murdy has devoted his time, energy, efforts, and talents to the Township of Syo for more than 43 years, and whereas James Murdy has been the Township Chief Assessor since 1980, and whereas James Murdy has contributed significantly to the maintenance, repair, and upkeep of the Syo Township information systems since 1985, and whereas James Murdy has gained the respect and friendship of his coworkers in the Syo Township offices, in part due to his indefatigable efforts to fix his coworkers' computer problems, including telling them to unplug and plug back in the offending machine, and whereas James Murdy wrote a computer program to automate property depreciation, inspiring the company that eventually became BSNA, and helping revolutionize the job of assessing nationally, and whereas James Murdy won the Uker Championship with Dick DeLonge three times at the annual Christmas party, and whereas James Murdy faithfully executed the duties of both chief assessor and IT officer while also maintaining his place in local rock and roll, Motown, and blues bands and behind the organ at his church, and whereas James Murdy has a strong commitment to public service and places a high priority on customer service and taking care of whatever is required, and whereas James Murdy will be sadly missed by all his coworkers, and whereas it is appropriate at this time to highlight James Murdy's many achievements and contributions, and to extend to him special recognition and commendation for a job well done, as he has dedicated his professional life to the service of others in Syo Township. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Township of Syo Board of Trustees does hereby extend its deep gratitude and appreciation, and commends James Murdy for his 43 years of dedication and unselfish service to the Township of Syo and its citizens, and wishes him good health and happiness in retirement.
You guys can't go, you know.
Oh, we're going. I know. Well, we're sad to see you go, both of you, thank you so much. And thanks for coming and waiting patiently until we got to the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you so much, you both.
And with that, is there a motion to move the consent agenda? Moved by Court.
Of support.
Of support by Noel, please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Consent agenda is passed.
Okay. That brings us to item I, unfinished business. The first item is possible action on property manager job description and position authorization. Did I say?
You said property manager.
Oh, project manager, sorry. I'm thinking my day job. Okay. We heard last week how one of the goals of the 2020 Parks and Pathways Village was to fund staff support for these projects. This goal was described in the village language. We need staff support for parks and pathway projects. The township also needs staff support for special assessment districts. We have relied too heavily on volunteers to help guide these SAD projects. Another area where project management will be needed is sustainability. There will be more and more projects as the township works to meet the needs of residents. And so I encourage the board to move forward with this approval of the project manager position. Are there other comments from members of the board? Clerk Flintoff?
Yes, briefly, I'm supportive of this, I think this is great. I'm glad we're moving forward on this. I want to say on the, particularly because it would be, this position would be managing the contracts with our township planner and township engineer insofar as they're related to these activities, so that I hope by making this investment in this staff person, part of what we'll be able to do is reduce the use of outside consultants to a degree. Further, I, I think the 50% from the Parks and Pathways Fund is appropriate, and for now, 50% from the general fund, though I would say, if you remember the financial analysis that was done back in May on this, the road SAD is still a possibility, depending on what we do with that, as well as, I, I agree with the recommendation that we pull in the admin costs from any grants or anything else that's appropriate, so that we can reduce the amount of general fund used for this position. But with that, I'm supportive. And I want to thank Diane Benson for all of her work on this.
Are there other comments?
I just reiterate the name, but I don't think we need to, to talk about it again, but I think, as, as I would say, as we met onsite, Andy Turner, who is the chair of the Parks Group, is trying to administer a lot of what hopefully this project manager would do, the need is, is immediate, and so I'm in complete support of creating the position.
I support the position also and think that, that the job description has done a really nice job of laying out specifically what's needed. I, I still will reiterate my very small concern about the, the framing at the end of license and accreditations preferred being the professional engineering degree. I would love it if we got a great engineer into this position, but my concern is that by, by putting that in there in that way, we might inadvertently reduce the applicant pool because they might start to think, oh, this isn't an engineering position. So I just wonder if, when we go to post this, whether we can find wording to really, really make it clear that while that's preferred, it is not at all required, so that we don't inadvertently reduce.
It's a good amendment.
The limit.
Yeah, I agree.
Do, do you want to add that to the job description, just to say licenses and accreditations preferred but not required?
Do you think that's enough?
Why don't we defer to our HR consultant on how to praise it, if we're all in consensus on what we're going for, and if I understand correctly, it's that, you know, I mean, it, it would be nice, but it sounds like it doesn't rise to the level of being preferred.
Right, I, I'm open to that, I would accept that.
Well, I guess this is a job description, the job posting, we're not voting on the job posting.
Or we could even eliminate the, the preferred.
Well, I would suggest that it is preferred, you know, having that engineering background. I think we can delineate in the job description whether it's a specific requirement, which I think is why Diana framed it as preferred only, because having that background will be significant, and there are applicants out there, I think, that will be available that potentially will have an engineering background. So I, I would, I would like to have that there, but have the language very specific in the description, or in the, in the job posting, so that it's, the way that it's actually set up, that it's clear that it's, there's tier one, which are requirements, and then there's tier two, which are, we'd love this, but it's, you know, please apply. But I, I would, it is preferred if possible, because I think that has a lot of merit, and if you're talking about trying to mitigate additional costs by outside consultants, that's where your money goes. We spend a lot of money right now with.
On engineering and other.
A lot of other areas, which we simply cannot perform the work, and if somebody could evaluate and perform even in a small facet of that, there could be some savings with, in regards to it. So I would still like it to be preferred, but I understand Trustee Corto's concern with the framing of that, so that people don't feel that it's a requirement, it is just a preference. And I would, I agree, and I think Diane would be the best one to address that concern.
And, and Jackie, I would say with all the varied degrees, I imagine that the recruitment might look a little different for somebody who has a, for environment and sustainability candidates than it may for urban and regional planning candidates. So maybe we could ask Diane if there might be a way to kind of customize where the emphasis is.
Yeah, I, I think how, how she puts together the position posting will address a lot of that.
Well, with that, is someone ready to make a motion?
Still moved.
Moved by Jerome, support by Corto, that we approve the job description and authorize the position of project manager as described therein. Is there?
I see no interested public.
Oh, yes, I was going to say, if there are no members of public who would like to comment, and everyone's done commenting, please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
With that, we are at.
Chief.
Discussion only, continued discussion of the need for a fire inspection program.
I have a little screen.
Sure.
Let me bring you in as a panelist. And please just leave your, your computer.
Already muted. Made that mistake once.
You're on it.
Okay. Can control everything I need to. All right, perfect, so. You want me to start the video as well?
There you go. So I think if you screen, oh, you're not ready, let me know when you're ready.
I'm ready.
Okay, so screen sharing. And then you won't see your secret twin.
So I am screen sharing, and it's, oh, there it is. So at July 13th board meeting, I brought this issue to the board, and it garnered a lot of discussion, and a number of questions that the board wanted answered, so I hope I can help answer some of those questions for you. The board asked a lot about fee structures, so I put together some data for that that the board can look at. And so I'll just run through some of the data here, and then ask for questions from the board, and then I'm going to circle back at the end and, and actually ask for direction and see which, what we'd like me to bring for, for something formal to get in front of the board for action. So I've been looking through some of the census data, Syo Township and Washtenaw County is the fifth largest by population, fourth by taxable value, and fourth by the number of properties to be inspected within the community. That's pretty significant. When you look at the county as a whole, there's basically 27 municipalities, there's 20 townships, six cities, and one village. So to be, to be ranked that high says something about the community, you know, people want to live here, people want to do business here because there's a lot of businesses, which shows you how many inspectables we have, and the township has some very high property value comparatively. We eliminate, based just on the townships, it goes Pittsville Township, Ypsilanti Township, and Syo Township as our most populous communities. When we look specific to inspectable properties, I'm just going to talk about the top five here, Ann Arbor City being the big one in the room. They have almost 5,000 inspectable properties within the community. They manage that with a workforce of three inspectors and a fire marshal. When I spoke to their fire marshal, he indicated he'd like to have five inspectors to get everything done in a timely manner. Granted, Ann Arbor being a city is a lot, a lot different than Syo Township. But we, we move on to some of our township neighbors, Pittsville Township, they estimate about 3,500 inspectable properties. Unfortunately, they're doing that with one person. Right now, I don't, I don't know that they get to all their, their businesses that they need to in a, in a timely manner, I think they do. A lot of the smaller mom and pop shops, they, they just rely on them, they send them out information, say, hey, here's the things that you should take a look at. And their bigger businesses, the more higher risk ones are the ones they're getting into pretty frequently. Ypsie Township, Ypsilanti Township, I'm sorry.
Be honest.
I know, and I'm going to do it again, and I apologize again. Ypsilanti Township, about 1,800 inspectable properties, one fire marshal there as well. And Syo, we have about 850 inspectable properties with one part-time inspector on a complaint-only basis. As it relates to rank structure for, for a position, the board asked for some data on assistant chiefs. When we look at our, our neighbors, again, in the same pool, I excluded many of the smaller communities around the outside of the county, because most of them don't do anything related to fire prevention, they're just too small, they don't have the businesses. But Ann Arbor City, they have two assistant chiefs, Dexter has two part-time, we have one part-time. Ypsilanti City has a fire marshal, that person does their inspections, and I believe they, they have about 400 addresses, but that position serves as the fire chief in the fire chief's absence. So while it's technically not an assistant chief position, it does carry the weight of a chief officer. I'm going to dig a little bit into, if I can get this rotated correctly for you.
Okay, keep going, I'll fix it.
Okay. Oh, there we go. Some revenue estimate inspections, and I thought it was important that the board kind of sees how this might affect a business if we were to enact something. So what I did is, I kind of estimated sizes of business, and I used a business that's under 10,000 square feet as a small, a business that's between 10,000 and 50,000 as a medium, and a business that's over 50,000 as a large. And rough estimates here, I think we've got about 55% of our businesses as small, about 40 as a medium, and about 5% as large. So predominantly, we've got smaller sized businesses, and if we. And if we take a look, for example, Culvers, we got their address there right here on Jackson. They have an assessed value of 710,000. It's just shy of 4,000 square foot building, and they pay a fire tax of 729 a year. So if we were to assign a value per square foot, two cents a square foot, three, four, and six is what I have laid out here. If we look at Culvers, we're to inspect them every three years, which is what I estimate we can do with a full-time person. If we were to charge two cents a square foot every three years, they'd get a bill for $79. Three cents a square foot, 119, 158 for four, and $237 for six cents per square foot. If we look at something a little bigger on that, Huron Valley Electric, 425 Jackson Plaza, assessed value of 335,000, just shy of 10,000 square feet, they pay $324 a year for fire tax. And as we, you know, you scroll that out, every three years at six cents, they'd be paying $600 or $200 a year for us to inspect the building. We get into our medium-sized buildings. One of our newer ones, I guess they've been here quite some time, but just recently moved, Ann Arbor Arms, 45-midi drive, $1.6 million business, just shy of 20,000 square feet, and they pay $1,695 fire protection tax. Looking at those same numbers, you know, anywhere from $395 to $1,200 every three years for an inspection fee. And then the ones on the large category, not very many of them, but as an example, Meyer, a $5.4 million business, 180,000 square feet, and they pay $6,000 a year in fire tax. And if we were to look at an inspection fee for those businesses, on the smaller side, two cents a square foot every three years, if you're looking at $3,600 for an inspection fee. Do have a little bit of commentary here, based on, this is kind of where I've got my estimates from what an inspector could do. Township's personnel policy has some PTO time, there's some holiday days in there. So I expect that we'd get about 44 weeks of in-the-field work, or 220 days. Small inspections typically would be about an hour for a business. You'd do six a day, there'd be a couple hours of paperwork to finish up at the end of the day. Mediums, two to three a day, a large, one or less per day. There's probably some businesses within the community that take us a couple days to get through. And I estimate an inspector would probably work three days a week for new inspections. So they'd come in Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, get out and get their new inspections in for the week. The rest of the couple days towards the end of the week to allow for re-inspections of businesses that have violations, going back out to them. And we'd wrap in some public education and some other responsibilities there as well. So I estimate about 348 inspections annually that a full-time person could do, once we're up and running. This next chart, I've got a number of inspections annually with estimates at various square foot cents, and also across the top, number inspections, 348. I expect that's 100% efficiency. I'd expect when we start, we'd be somewhere between 75 and 85%. We've still gotta identify all our addresses, we've still gotta make sure we've got good contact info for everything, and get a handle on the full picture. And once we have all that data stored, then it's a matter of just circling back through. There'll be occasional corrections as new businesses come in, we'll update the records as well. But there's gonna be some upfront work because we don't have that data together. So if we were to say, for example, if we estimate three, four, three, and two cents, that'd be four cents for small, three cents for a medium, two cents for a large, at 75% efficiency, we'd bring in about 121,000 a year, and up to 161, once we're up and running and have everything identified. I do wanna offer that in comparison of costs as well. Really, two ways to think about an assistant chief position and an inspector position. Assistant chief, I estimate at 95% my wage. An inspector, I estimate at 90% of the assistant chief's wage. In a lot of places, they'll create a division like that. And these are estimates. So, you know, if we were to pick a fee schedule that would cover this, we could do that. If we were to pick a lesser fee schedule to help offset the costs, we'd have to make up the other money. So for example, if we decided two cents, two cents, and two cents is good, we'd probably need to make up, you know, $30,000, $35,000 a year to start, to support the program. If we wanted to make it fully funding, you know, we'd probably be looking at somewhere four, three, and two for the first three years. And I'd ask that this be adjusted annually. We don't want to overcharge or undercharge if the board decided to go with the fee structure type arrangement. Process-wise, if the board wants to give me the go-ahead today to, let me get this flipped over again, I apologize. I lost my ability to switch this over. So if the board wants me to continue to go ahead, we can look at more funding options. We can talk about that. There's no room in the fire budget. If the general fund wanted to fund it, I'd be happy with that. Fund balance, fee structure, any way the board wants to look at it, that's one way to get the thing funded and up and running. We need to look at a job classification. My recommendation would be the assistant chief. I think, you know, if I'm out of town, that gives that person the opportunity, it's a management person, gives them the opportunity that if there's discipline needed, they can address it, can talk together, we don't have to wait for things like that. And also, a chief officer on some major incidents is always helpful. Our staff guys that are on the field are very competent and able to do their job, but there come times where they just don't know what to do. I had that experience in my previous place of employment, and oftentimes, I was glad to have a chief officer show up to bounce something off of. It's my recommendation, it's about $6,000 more than if we were to go straight with an inspector position. Straight, just the inspector position, person would be subject to overtime, not a management person. My guess is it would be a bargain for a position. I think the union would submit a demand bargain, which, you know, absolutely they're right, they could do that. But once we've established those three criteria, I'll bring you back something for you to adopt as a fee schedule. I would work on a job description. There's a lot out there that I've already got that we could tailor to our needs. We'd work through the hiring process. I would recommend we generally keep it inside the department, provided we have competitive testing. We'd want at least two to three people testing for the position. There's a company called Emco that we use for our hiring list. They have prepackaged tests for all these positions. So they'd be able to create a eligibility list, test the candidates, and give us their number one, two, and three, or however many we got. If we don't have enough internal candidates to make it competitive, it's gonna extend the process a little bit. We'd want to find someone from, we need to solicit outside candidates as well, and then put them all through a testing process to establish our list. And then, once we're to the final point, if it's an outside candidate, we do our background investigation and so on and so forth, and then we bring back to the board someone to hire for the position. With that, support have any questions they'd like to ask?
Not a question, but I remembered you saying, we were just talking one morning, one of the fires this past six months or whenever it was, had we had this program, it might not have happened. I think that was to Sherwin-Bray.
Yeah, I think there could have, you know, and
Been a recommendation, maybe
The system there was not alarmed. A person in this position could have required it to be alarmed, and we've got notification of that fire earlier, which would have lessened damage, so I guess.
Trustee Corto.
So I really appreciate your laying out the various rate structures and the comparisons and showing it by the number of inspections. That's very helpful. I guess what I'm wondering about is, some of these are equal rate structures across any size building, and some show the rate declining per square foot as the square footage goes up, and I see that's what Ann Arbor does. You know, I understand that that might share the cost more equally, but I also, I'm really pondering the equity implications. Do we want an across-the-board rate? Do we want to do some adjustment? Can you just discuss that aspect a little bit?
No, absolutely. If, and that's, you're not the first one to offer that comment. And if that's the direction the board wanted to go, we could, it doesn't have to be two or three cents, we could settle on 2.3 cents per square foot to make the numbers work. So yeah, I'm totally open to that, and it's a great comment.
Trustee Jerome?
So I just want to make sure I'm clear on that, because I'm sort of, I'm totally in support of the inspection process, and I'm remiss that we haven't had it in the past here, or did, and then it went away, and I don't know what happened. But as I look at your municipal inspection comparison breakdown, I just want to make sure I'm not conflating two issues, because I see that only 40% of the 10 examples that you provided have as an assistant chief, correct?
Correct.
So 60% don't. And is the assistant chief, I know you said it's $6,000 more, but is it really part of the inspection process? Or are we just, is it an advantage to have that overlay with regards to respect to Syo, is one question? And maybe, I'll swallow the answer.
So, yeah, so this, I apologize, this is a little confusing, but I was calling people and collecting data. The two, assistant chief and fire inspection are generally uncorrelated. As an example, Ann Arbor has three or four-person prevention bureau and two assistant chiefs Dexter, two assistant chiefs, neither of them related to the inspection process. Syo, our part-time assistant chief does our inspections for us on a demand level. And Celine, I'm still not hard to present certain on it.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because they were getting married. My other question comes, and I looked at this, and I went through the Fire Savvy and Ultimate, and wondered if, you know, as I look at ours, so 850 in comparison to Pittsfield is 24% of the calls that they do, and they do that with, they actually have one full-time, correct?
Correct.
And we're suggesting to have them one full-time, and we have 24% of what they have in terms of comparable inspections.
Yes.
So I was wondering if there was a configuration that would support potentially a part-time and a hybrid of part-time and consultants that could do the rudimentary inspections with the smaller businesses that you're talking about? And then obviously have a more proficient fire professional, not saying that Ultimate or Fire Savvy are not, but wondering if there's a hybrid model that would not necessarily have to support a full-time position, and what your thoughts were with that? Not suggesting that's the answer, I just wanted to see what your thoughts were in relation to the possibilities of different configurations of interesting inspection deficiencies that we have in Syo.
Sure, yep. So both, I included both Fire Savvy and Ultimate Fire Protection specifically for that purpose, right? And I basically gave their breakdown of ours. Fire Savvy charges $99 an hour for this type of work. So if we were to put them, you know, if they were to be our full-time person, you know, it's 2,080 hours in a full-time position, that's over $200,000.
Yeah, I did that.
And Ultimate a little bit more. They did offer something to the effect of, hey, we'll come work for you for $4,000 a month, part-time, but you gotta provide me a car, you gotta provide me benefits, you gotta provide me this, you gotta provide me that, and, oh, and you've gotta manage the work for me. So essentially, we're, you know, we still need someone to manage the coordination aspect of it.
Yeah, that was for both Ultimate and Fire Savvy.
Fire, or Ultimate was the only one that offered the part-time and full-time work. Did that answer that question?
Yeah.
You know, I think there was one more point in there, the discrepancy or relation of the number of
Yeah, there's 3,500 for Pittsfield, there's 1,800 for Ypsilanti Township.
Correct. Yep, so I think, you know, I think Pittsfield Township does a lot of their businesses on a, they send them out an annual letter and say, hey, follow up on these things, these are the kind of things we see. So they're not actually getting into the businesses?
Not an onsite inspection.
Correct, yep. It's a, it's an honor system type inspection. And I think for us to have more credibility to our program, I'd like to see our people in every building. I think there's just a lot of benefit to actually sitting there, talking to a business owner, not just for the inspection, but the education part of it as well. Oftentimes, we get out of these, oh, hey, we need a fire extinguisher training. Well, it's a good thing we could train you on that, so we send them out. A number of businesses rely on us for fire extinguisher training, too. And having that face-to-face in every business in the community helps build that rapport and helps get our safety message across better, I think. I would also say, based on Ann Arbor City's numbers, Pittsfield probably needs two more inspectors.
Thank you for that information. Quick.
Sure, two quick questions and then a comment. Is it required by law that the township fire department conduct these inspections?
Is it required by law? Strictly reading the law, yes, we do have a responsibility to do this work.
Okay. And when is the last time we did this work? Jack Germain?
Jack Germain was our last inspector.
Funded by the general fund, 10-ish years ago?
I wanna say '08.
'08?
Was approximately the time he left.
Okay, so it's been about 13 years-ish since we've done this. Okay. And so I would just say, I think it's our responsibility to do this. I wanna thank you, chief. I think I speak for everybody when I tell you how much we appreciate you and your expertise that you bring to the township. I would also note that we have a wonderful assistant chief who has been a paid-on-call firefighter, plus a $375 a month stipend for being the assistant chief. So we don't have an assistant chief position, and we don't have an inspector or marshal position. So I would recommend, you know, there's good reasons for both, and if you think that we could get a twofer with an assistant chief-level position, with somebody who would have the, you know, skills to be able to be officer on scene when you're not there, then I would be supportive of, you know, going ahead with, you know, creating a job description for an exempt, hopefully exempt, non-unionized, full-time position at the assistant chief level. My preference is that this program would be funded entirely by the inspection fees. I agree, there's some equity concerns, other ways to look at the numbers, but I don't find any of the numbers unreasonable when we're talking about fire prevention for these businesses. So I'd prefer that it would be 100% inspection fees, but I would also recommend that the backup for this be the general fund, at least during the startup. It looks like, I don't know if it's six months or a year, whatever that interim period is, that would be needed. I would be supportive of that because I do know how stretched the fire fund is, and you already have a 10-year obligation to pay back funding to the general fund. And I would note, in the past, this was funded by the general fund, and I believe that it shifted, and Donna can provide the history here, when the SAD came.
At that point, the fire department was paid entirely out of the general fund.
Great, so at that point, it was, and then it's when the SAD went into play that this went away?
Yes, because they had their own funding.
Gotcha.
Designated strictly for fire department.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And I'm clarifying, your progression for the potential supplement of general funds is when, is the period of time to go from 85% to 100% efficiency in the inspection program, that should be set?
Correct, whatever that startup period is.
So the general fund would be sort of like seed money for this?
Exactly.
If necessary. We could also adopt a fee structure that wouldn't require seed money. I mean, that's, but I think we have our obligation to take a look at the equity in terms of how we establish that fee in conjunction with salary level and some of the assumptions we're making about wanting to overlay assistant chief responsibility to the inspection. Roll.
If I could offer one more point, if this position were to be an assistant chief, we wouldn't need the part-time assistant chief, so some funds in our part-time employee budget could be used as well.
So that'd be some savings.
Correct.
Trustee Noel?
Just, I'd like a recap.
Just, I'd like a recap from you, Andy. If you could just summarize again what your recommendation is and why?
Gotcha, so my recommendation is that we, and I apologize, I see her over there, she's a little, there, I've got you in front of me again. My recommendation is that we hire, we create the position as a full-time assistant chief position. I see the board wants to use a fee structure, I'm happy to create that and get it on the books, and get this work started. Does that clear?
That's good, that's good, yes, thank you.
Well, I just want to add my voice and support, and I also, I support doing this in-house, not outsourcing it. I think that the relationship building is part of this, and the education, you know, I've had a little experience with the city of Ann Arbor, with the fire inspections there, and it's really, it is helpful to the business owners to have that interaction, and I, and the education that comes from it. I think, you know, I mean, the other cost savings that's implicit in this is reduction in the number of fires, and so, so I think, you know, that's something that, you know, we should be, you know, keeping, keeping in mind, that, you know, it's not just a fee structure, that, you know, it's benefit that we're giving to these businesses.
Sure. Yeah, and this, you know, getting into these businesses like this will lead to measurable risk reduction. I think I forwarded some inspection reports onto the board, I don't know if everyone had a chance to look through some of the pictures in there, but, you know, we've got some disasters waiting to happen that we're working on correcting, and I think, once we get into businesses, we're going to find a lot more and be able to help reduce risk for them as well.
Thank you, this is not an action item this evening, so we'll look forward to, I guess, having it come back as an action item.
Will do, thank you, Board, appreciate your time.
And one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
If we do this program, not if, I mean, when you're doing these things, is it somehow, can it be made advantageous, advantageous, too big a word for this term, for the business owner under insurance?
Absolutely.
Is there anything where they can get reports, and it helps?
So, big picture, our, your fire department is graded by a company called Insurance Services Office, ISO. We have an ISO rating, they come out and they evaluate the department, the response, the training.
Water.
Water, correct, everything right on down the line, and one of those things is community risk reduction. So some community risk reduction activities we've already taken, we've subscribed a free subscription to a program website called iRoll, it's inspection reports online. We now require any service provider who looks at a suppression system, alarm system or such within the community to report directly to iRoll. So now, we're going to go on there once a week, and we're going to review those reports, and if we see something immediately, we can say, hey, we noticed you're out of compliance on this, send them a letter and put them on the list to go out and check. Going back to ISO, all these community risk reduction things add up to points which reduce our ISO rating, which in the community overall help reduce our property, our homeowner's insurance, fire risk.
Are we basically, in the majority of the township, we still look in?
No, so actually, we were just, when Director Icesca was here, went through the rating process. SIO Township is, has technically three ratings, a six, 10 being the worst, one being the best, a six in areas that have municipal water, a 6X in rural areas. So we've demonstrated that our ability to get water to rural areas equal to our municipal water system, and there are three areas within the community that are a 10, or a 10W. Those are areas that are five road miles from a station, the far northeast corner, the far southeast corner, I believe the subdivision down there is Kensington Woods, they're a 10W because they have hydrants, and in the far southeast corner, we're a 10.
I'm familiar with rating Cisco.
Sure you are.
And I knew 10 was always on.
I will say we're a 66X, which is not bad.
No.
You know, I think one of the goals that we're trying to do with this, with our training, with everything we do, is to help improve that number. That comes in dollars and cents in everybody's pocket.
And unfortunately, there's probably a limitation because of, you know, having to haul the water?
Yep.
Yep. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, thanks, Andy.
So the next item is possible action on renewal of the roads advisory committee with a new charge. And so this is coming back, this is something that we considered earlier this summer, and at that point, the proposal that I had put forward was for a study committee, and that was based on conversations I'd had, which then turned out, people had sort of evolved, their thinking had evolved, and so instead, we're bringing back renewal, or sort of reinvigoration, I guess, of the prior committee, with a new charge, but drawing on the charge for the original committee from 2006. And Trustee Noel and I worked on this together, and so this is our proposal we're putting forward, and I know from conversations that at least one member of the board of trustees has some suggestions to make, so I'd like to open it up for comments from members of the board. Trustee Carteau?
Thank you, I have some suggestions to make. I really think this is a great start, I wanted to offer some additional language to three of the points, just to really clarify the charge. So my suggestion for point F is to add a statement that the committee should review WCRC's annual road report to ensure that priorities are clear, that critical work needed to prevent road or culvert deterioration is clearly flagged, and that budget estimates are provided to the township board. So that's just explaining a little bit more of that point F. On point G, it mentions, you know, working with planning, and I just thought we could add the statement, work with the planning commission and township planner to understand the master plan and zoning, and to ensure that road priorities and proposals are harmonious with the existing and future land use maps. To facilitate this process, the local roads advisory commission should include one member who is also on the planning commission. My third suggestion, and I can give you the wording.
That would be great, thank you.
My third suggestion is to supplement point I, I think it's I, it may be L, I can't tell from my type, which mentions traffic calming, and this specifies, work with WCRC to understand criteria for where traffic calming measures can be put in place, and assess areas where they are warranted. And a final point, and this is added to the charge, research and advise the township on best management practices and protections for natural beauty roads, and advise the township on whether there are additional roads within SIO that merit this designation and protection. Those are my suggestions, just to make sure that we have a really clear and specific charge.
Natural beauty is an L, a new?
I'm sorry?
The natural beauty is a new?
Is the new one.
Okay, so the L.
Right.
Have you ever talked with the road commission on natural beauty roads?
Yes.
So do you know the history? I know that they, well, my experience with them on natural beauty roads is they're not very current to pretend them. They, because we had a couple, we, Marshall was a natural beauty, and there was one.
Tubbs.
Tubbs, yeah. And all of a sudden, I think the signs have been gone for a while, long while.
And we still have one on tubbs.
Oh, okay.
But they aren't really managing according to the standards that even their own policies exist.
Well, we and other people, other citizen groups inquire, and they said, we're not doing them anymore. This was a long time ago, so I'm not sure where they are now.
Oh, Claire Flintoff, and we'll go to Trustee Noel.
I don't know how you want to handle these, I have a small set to add.
Okay.
For consideration.
Sure.
Okay. The first is under number three, sub-point G, committee members shall serve without pay. I suggest striking that from this and any of our future committee charges. In other jurisdictions, the research has found that it raises equity issues, so, well, you know, the roads advisory committee will be without pay, I don't think there's any reason to have a policy for that. It's possible for most people to be able to afford, you know, the time without 20 bucks or some stipend to come to a meeting, but not for everybody, so would suggest that we strike that, and to remind the board too, that the compensation commission, when we seat it, they may also make recommendations on committee and commission compensation if we ask them to. So strike G. The second change is under five, last paragraph, last sentence shall be arranged through the township administrator, I would strike administrator and just say staff. The project manager job we just approved, I think, will be the lead staff for this, so I would just keep it vague, township staff. Under six, second paragraph, second sentence, certified by the chairman, it shall be the chairperson. And?
Wait, what was that?
Under, I think it was just a typo, under number six expenditures, the second paragraph, it says, and certified by the chairman of the committee. I would ask we change it to chairperson, as we have in the rest of the document. On page three, under D, and I think these duties are all excellent, and I love your suggestions, Jackie, under D, I would ask that we add specifically that they make a recommendation on if and how to renew the township-wide SAD by January 2022. I mean, we don't need to put that in, but specifically make a recommendation on if and how to renew the township-wide SAD. And I want to call that out specifically, because the last tranche is in the winter tax bill 2022. I personally would love for this committee to have a solid recommendation to the board on if and how to proceed by the beginning of 2022, and I'm just looking at that, because if we do decide to take it to the voters or something like that, we would need to know that by spring of 2022 to get it on the ballot. And then one more small one, if I, if I could, Alec, under letter I, I would just ask that we integrate AAAT and any bus infrastructure. We talk about traffic calming and other things, but we do have the bus millage, and would just love for this group to just be thinking about those things as well. That's it, Will.
Okay. This is going to be hard to capture all of these changes.
Yeah.
But I guess, you know, we have a recording, you can go back. And actually, I think both of you probably have notes that we can use to incorporate these. I think Trustee Noel was next.
I'm fine with all of these proposed changes. I think they add clarity, and they're consistent with what we want, so I'm fine with those changes. I'm wondering, Jackie, do you have the, your proposed changes written out?
I do, yeah.
She can send them to me.
Yes, I do, I can send them to everyone.
Okay.
That'd be good, because I wasn't writing fast enough, I'm sure.
I was reading from exactly what I had written and forgot to bring from the printer, so.
I've got some of it written down, but I didn't get everything.
Trustee Jerome?
I'm in favor of the changes, with the exception of the January 2022. I don't think, I think by the time we recognize that we want a committee, then we identify members of the committee. You're talking about a Herculean task to make that kind of determination in a few months' time. I think the charge is not necessarily a bad charge for them to be working on, but I would be hesitant to put in a timeline of, in their responsibilities. I would rather leave that open-ended to them, and that they can address that as necessary. There's a big learning curve, this has not been around for a long time, and to put that and try to balance all those things, that's, would be my primary concern, otherwise all the other amendments are.
May I ask a follow-up question to Alec?
Sure.
So what about if we just said specifically, to provide a recommendation on if and how to renew the township-wide SAD?
I would be fine with the language of it, I just don't want to, I don't want, I don't want a false deadline.
No.
Apply to them that will distract them from the tasks at hand. I think they need to be able, and partly part of the charge of BOT will help guide them in terms of where they're going to have to learn to prioritize, and then we're going to have to assist in prioritization of, this is a lot to do.
It's a ton.
Especially, you know, having sat on a number of committees and commissions from their infancy, it takes a while to get your sea legs, and so I want to give them that opportunity to do that without imposing artificial deadlines, and I don't mean that in a bad way, I just, I just, I know how long it takes to really get yourself going.
Well, there's sort of an implicit, there's an implicit deadline, because we know when the SAD, the township-wide SAD expires, so I think, you know, to honor this charge and sort of consider it, you know, they'd have to be acting with that in mind. Are there other comments?
No.
No? Well, this is an action item, so we can hear comments from members of the public at this point.
Any members of the public like to speak on the proposed action to renew the roads advisory committee, please raise your hand. I see no interested members of the public. Will?
Well, with these modifications, is there someone who is ready to make a motion to?
Move.
So move by Jerome?
Support.
I think support by Carteau, and I guess we can call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, Diaz, Carteau?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, all right. The next item is the one that we sort of added, and that is the resolution to authorize Washtenaw County to conduct the historic district study, and because this was added late, it's not in the packet, I'll try and read through this quickly. So this is a resolution to authorize Washtenaw County through the Washtenaw County Historic District Commission to conduct a historic district study of the Wild Fry Farm property in SIO Township for possible local historic district designation. So whereas the property located at 7970 West Liberty Road in SIO Township, Michigan, has the potential to be nominated as a local historic district, and where has the potential to be nominated as a local Historic District, and whereas the Board of Trustees of Scioto Township at their regular meeting on August 24th, 2021, approved this resolution requesting the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners through the Washtenaw County Historic District Commission to conduct this work in their behalf, and whereas, under Michigan's Historic Districts Act, PA 169 of 1970, as amended in 1992, and Washtenaw County Historic Preservation Ordinance Number 115, a Historic District Study Committee must be established to evaluate the property and determine if it meets criteria to be included in a Historic District. And whereas, under PA 169, the County Board of Commissioners has the authority to establish such a Historic District Committee, and whereas Scioto Township has determined that the preservation of this property is compatible with the long-range goals of Scioto Township regarding the preservation of historic resources, and whereas Scioto Township Board of Trustees understands that the township must enter into a contract giving the county jurisdiction over the proposed Historic District as a precondition to the county beginning the process to set up a Historic District Study Committee. Now, therefore, be resolved by the Scioto Township Board of Trustees as follows. The Scioto Township Board of Trustees hereby authorizes its supervisor to execute a contract with Washtenaw County, granting the county the authority to exercise jurisdiction granted by PA 169 of 1970 and the Washtenaw County Historic Preservation Ordinance Number 115 over the proposed Wild Fry Farm Historic District. That is the resolution. And I, and I would note that as I read through this, I realized there's a few typos, so I would.
There's a misspelling.
I would hope that we would correct those before we would finalize.
With the corrections.
Yeah.
You must have been nervous when you were hitting that S and E.
Well.
There was a need to do it. I'm proud of everything else. Remind that word is.
No problem.
Yes. I didn't catch them until I was reading it, but, so, is there discussion?
And I might just add for clarity. So I, I've been working with the WHDC, of which I'm a member. Part of the process is we had approved moving forward with this concept prior, but in my conversations with the lead over there, Melinda, it was recommended, we could get a, she could ask for the Board of Commissioners to, to suggest that the approval would be sufficient, but the process requires a resolution. So we had been working on a contract, which actually comes later in this process. So therefore, I presented the resolution so that it meets the requirements of the Board of Commissioners so they can move. And this will be then in front of us in the WHDC for our September meeting. So just a little bit of clarity.
Thank you, Alec.
So the reason that we did this one is to try and comply with the required steps for that body. Are there other comments from members of the Board of Trustees? Members of the public?
Any interested members of the public? There are none.
In that case.
I would like to make the motion.
Move by Courtois.
All support.
Support by Jerome, that we adopt the resolution as read and with the stipulation that we correct the typos. Please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintop, Ties, Courtois?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
This brings us to new business and the possible action on the Scioto Township water and sewer rate proposal. And for this, we have.
Michael Lessig.
Michael Lessig. And I don't know if Steve, if Steve's still here, if he wants to introduce this.
Michael and Steve, I'm bringing you both in as panelists and you should be able to start your screens.
Okay. Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Welcome back, Steve.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, good evening again. Yeah, you have in your packet a cover letter by the Woodhill Group, two resolutions for consideration, and a PowerPoint outline for background information. As you recall, at the July Board Meeting, you approved the specific user fees, which was maintained that the cost for special services should be borne by the specific users that were requesting them. Step two of that process is a rate study was conducted by the Woodhill Group. And, you know, there are three components of that. The connection fees when somebody hooks up to water and/or sewer. And the other one is the, the ready-to-serve charge, which is the principal and interest payment recovery. And the final one is the commodity rate, which is the cost to provide the water to our customers. That includes the cost of buying the water from Ann Arbor. With us tonight is Michael Lessig, who is a program manager for the Woodhill Group. He's done a tremendous amount of work on this. He's been a great help. He's a very wise man and he has a PowerPoint presentation that I think will be of interest to you to give you some background information and I think it would be interesting for the public to see. So with that, I'll let Michael take it away.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I wear headphones so I can make sure I hear you too. Good evening, and it's my pleasure to be here. My name is, as they said, Michael Lessig. I am from the Woodhill Group. I have been working on your water and sewer rates and cleaning up some of your database stuff with your Township staff, and they've been a great help. So I will get started with this PowerPoint, and I do not believe in death by PowerPoint, so I'll try to move quickly. If you have questions, please let me know. All right, are we, can you see my PowerPoint now?
Just a moment, let me. Um, no.
Not yet.
Not yet. I see that you're screen sharing, but I don't see it.
All right, that's, okay.
We do have it in the packet, however.
All right, well, let's see. Since you are sharing a screen. Love PowerPoint. Or, can you see that one?
Steve seems to be seeing it.
Yeah, I see it.
Okay.
We're just not seeing it.
Hold on, hold on here.
We're probably people.
We're, we're the ones who can't. So, so here's what I want to say. I believe members of, the, the problem is, I don't know that members of the public can see it and we can't see it. Sorry, Michael, we're just trying to learn how to use.
That is not a problem. I, I've been doing Zoom for the last 18 months. I'm well aware of its idiosyncrasies.
Yeah, so, Michael, just please proceed. And for those of you who can't see his presentation, please look at the deck.
Okay, very good. Tonight, we're talking about, as Steve mentioned, three elements of your water and sewer rate structure. Background operating losses in, for the past four years, have been $1.8 million in operating losses in your water fund and approximately $1.6 million in operating loss in your sewer fund. Those operating losses have been covered primarily by your connection fee income. Connection fees are the fees that someone pays when they connect to the system in new construction. So a new subdivision, a new commercial building, a new industrial building would pay a connection fee, essentially a buy-in to your system. And I'm getting some background.
I think it's your headphones, just so you know.
Okay, I will try to overcome that. Anyway, reserves and new customer connection fees are how you've been paying for these operating losses. Reserves are subsidizing the operating cost of your system. What that means is that as the system operates, you are using these reserves that should be used for capital improvements to operate your day-to-day system. New customer connection fees are, as I said, subsidizing operating costs, and connection fee income should be reserved for capital improvements to your system, such as new water mains, sewer, et cetera. All right, so tonight, we're talking about three proposed actions. One is the water and sewer connection fees. The proposal is to adjust new service connection one-time fees for water and sewer to reflect a proportional and equitable buy-in to the existing Township utility system. Number two, water debt charges. Currently, your revenues from the water debt charge do not cover the principal and interest payments on the Township's debt obligations. Revise the rates based on a new formula that fully covers all debt service payments on an annual basis. It's easy to calculate and you can always make sure you're covering the cost. Last is the water and sewer commodity charges, which are also usage rates based upon the amount of usage and customer use. You need to adjust that to cover Ann Arbor rate increases that are passed along on an annual basis. Taking these three actions now will help stabilize the water and sewer fund, provide additional funding for identified and ongoing capital improvement projects, and cover the increased cost passed on from Ann Arbor. Here's a slide showing your capital needs summary. Currently, you need, your current five-year capital needs in the water fund are about $2 million, and the five-year capital needs projected for the sewer fund are about $14,250,000. For water, you have about $5 million in unrestricted reserves. This is, these are funds that can be turned into cash at some point in time and can be used to fund these capital improvements. They are not all necessarily cash today. They may be accounts receivable, other forms of funding that will come forward in the future. Bottom line, you are about $11 million short in the water side and about $1 million, and about $1 million short in the sewer fund. In sewer, you have $14 million in unrestricted, I'm sorry, I'm getting a phone call. There we go. All right. So that's, that one. Shortfalls will be covered by financing and new connection fees. Key rate-setting objectives that we use. Operating maintenance cost must be covered by the current user fees. We should pay at every fiscal year the full cost of operating the system using the current charges paid by current customers. Debt service, principal and interest payments must be covered by current user fees. So the annual debt service for fiscal year 2122 should be covered by the user charges for fiscal year 2122. Connection fees, we should be reserving those for capital improvements. When someone comes into the system, they expect a good, well-operating system, this in good repair, these connection fees help support those improvements. Use of reserves should be a planned event by the governing body. That means that the Board of Trustees should know that we are, when we are dipping into fund balance, that the Board should make that as a policy decision. And yes, and, and fully understand what the need is and why those funds are being used. Rate methodology, methodology solutions, they should be transparent and easy to understand. And water utility rates are not always transparent and not always easy to understand. We do try to design transparent rate and connection fee methodologies using the existing rate structure that you have for ease of implementation and annual update. Use industry standards. Use AWA, which is American Waterworks Association, industry standards and best practices to design easily calculated charges. And stage, the stages of rate, rate development methodology and adoption. Identify component solutions in stages for quicker implementation and resolution of your cash problem. And that's what we're going to cover tonight. The basic underpinning of these solutions are, particularly in debt service, is a meter equivalent unit. Your home, a single-family residential home, is one meter equivalent unit. It's a unit of measure used to represent the average usage of a single-family residential dwelling. We use meter sizes. So a 5/8, so 3/4, a 1-inch meter for a residential user would all be what we would call one meter equivalent unit. Commercial, educational, government, residential properties with larger meters are charged proportionally to the size of the water meter installed. So a 2-inch meter would require more capacity from the system, they would be given additional meter equivalent units. I'll show you that on the next page. Under the standards of the American Waterworks Association, a retail facility with a 2-inch meter is the equivalent of eight residential homes. This is a key point. Does anyone have any questions on this? And I will move along. So here's basically the meter, the equivalency schedule. We've modified it somewhat to include everyone with a 1-inch meter or smaller that is a residential user as an equivalency unit of one. So if you have a 5/8 inch meter and your neighbor has a 1-inch meter, but you're both a single-family home, you're going to be a 1 MEU customer. As we get up into larger sizes, you will see a 2-inch meter is equivalent to eight homes essentially for billing purposes. An 8-inch meter is equivalent to 80 homes. In the Township, we took, we took a look at all of your meters, analyzed for all of the meter sizes that you have, and came up with 2,416 water meters and 2,404 sewer meters. And what, that is, you have a, several flat-rate sewer customers, so we charge those a little differently. Utilizing this chart based upon the nut size of the meters, the number of meters, we came up with 4,224 meter equivalent users for your water system, 4,087 meter equivalent users for your sewer system. We broke that down, you said, I had no commercial buildings, I had no government buildings, et cetera. It would be the equivalent of 4,224 single-family homes. So that is what the rates and charges are based on as the, essentially the divisor for these charges. Connection charges, we'll move right into that. The connection charges currently are for water, $2,445. Current sewer connection charge is $4,530. That is a difference, there was a typo in your PowerPoint packet and I fixed that in my slide. So how these are calculated, we take the book value, what is the value of your system, of the things in the ground, and what is the equity you have available to, for capital improvements? These are your net assets. We divide that by the number of equivalent units and we come up with a connection charge of $4,201, this Township side. On the sewer side, you have $28 million in assets available, $14 million in the ground, and $14 million available for capital improvement. We divide that by the equivalent units for sewer, and we came up with $6,955 for a single-family home. So essentially, if you bought, if you were purchasing a new home, the charge, as we calculated, would be $4,200 to cover your water and $6,955 to cover your sewer. We realized that's a big jump on the sewer side especially, and we did try to moderate that sum at least for the initial phase and bring that down to $5,216. So the recommendation is water MEU connection charge, $4,201. The sewer connection charge would be $5,216. Water debt service. This one's fairly easy. Your current fiscal year 2022 budget debt service revenue is budgeted for $183,000, but your actual debt payment is $502,000, leaving you $319,000 short on the debt service charge to cover that principal and interest that you do, you will be paying this year. So by dividing that, $500,000 roughly by 4,000 equivalent units, we come up with an annual rate for a single-family home of $118.92, which would be equivalent to $9.91 a month. So again, we divide the debt payments by the number of equivalent users and that we come up with an annual rate, and there is, that is the charge that is calculated. Last but not least, the commodity charges. Your current rate for water is $8.18. Your current sewer rate is $9.86. Based upon the Ann Arbor purchase cost increase, our proposed rate for this would be going from $8,000. our proposed rate for this would be going from $8.18 for water to $8.39 for water. Sewer would go from $9.86 to $10.39. As you can see here, it's a 2.61% increase on the water usage charge, 5.38 on increase on the sewer side. Averaged out, it's a 4.1% net increase per 1,000 gallons purchased. There's an example of a proposed, example residential customer using 9,000 gallons of water or sewer over three months. Currently, they pay $229.42. Based upon 9,000 gallons used over that three-month period, this would increase to $250.58. And that's it. If I went through that pretty quickly, I apologize. Any questions?
Any questions from members of the Board of Trustees? Trustee Corto.
I wonder if we have a way of knowing how many people this might, you know, who currently struggle with their bills, which, which this might affect negatively.
Do I, I do not have that particular number of people, no.
I mean, clearly, we need to, we need to fully fund our sewer and water. I'm just trying to understand how this is going to affect the community.
If I could step in, you know, we-
Yes, thank you. I didn't know if it was a question from your-
Yeah, sorry about that. So, so we do try to set up payment plans where possible. If somebody calls and they, they have a hardship. And we, we also have a hardship policy currently.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, trustee, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I don't know who was handling that first.
I'm sorry.
I just have, and Steve, I know you're newer, but I'm hoping maybe some of the other Board of Trustees that have been with, or, I guess I'm surprised that we've, that this system has been in place for so long and we so severely underservice and underpay. And I wondered if there was a, some background as to why this approach has not been addressed in the past four years or eight, and maybe Donna, you know, maybe, I don't, I don't know. I'm just asking from a point of view. Obviously, I think that funding the sewer and the water, some of them are, you know, when I look at, obviously, Ann Arbor changing their rates and then obviously having to do that as a pastor, I think is very logical. But the, the longer connection fee and debt charges that we haven't addressed for so long, I'm just, I'm wondering if there's some history there that I'm not aware of. Just asking.
You know, I can't speak, I can't speak to that other than I can say that, looking back to 2013, the rates have remained the same. And I would like to add also that every time we have a connection fee, there's an additional, about $8,900 that goes to the city of Ann Arbor by our contract for the connection fee. So, you know, you can add $8,900 onto this cost that, that SIO is charging. And that, that is normally paid by the developer and the homeowner eventually, of course.
And these fees in place, you said, have been in place since 2013.
I went back, I went back as far as 2013 was as far as I could look back, and, and those connection charges were the same.
Thank you. Clerk Flintoff.
Sure. And, you know, I think we, we each have our, our different perspective on it. But Alex, this is an example of one of the reasons why, you know, I have insisted, when I took this position, to stick my nose in finances, start the Budget and Finance Committee, because so many of these major financial policy issues, for whatever reasons, were not making their way to the Board, even though staff, treasurer, others knew that there's issues were there. So, I think between the fire inspection program and the water and sewer issues, these are two of the big ones. And I want to thank Steve, Fire Chief, we have two excellent department heads. The expertise of Woodhill has been critical in starting to apply the level of expertise we need to help these department heads bring these really big hairy issues, unfiltered, to the Board so that we can make the policy, policy decisions we need to fix them. I will know, I, I think it's a great analysis. I also want to thank Woodhill for the really intelligent proposal within each resolution, that we pass this resolution once and empower the finance director to work in partnership with the utility director to evaluate and raise these rates each year based on this formula. So, what we're setting isn't just a single, one-time rate, you know, for, for each of these, but also to do it incrementally. And, and my understanding is, you know, Jackie, to your, your, your good point about how it impacts, impacts the least amongst us. If we did this all at once, it would be something like, what is it, Michael, 100% increase? It would be 100 and what?
I, I don't know the exact number, but it's a significant change. And if I just speak to that, your, your problem, your problem is not uncommon. No one likes to see their water bill increase. And especially with the changes, the aging system, the need for infrastructure upgrades. All of those are tough decisions for policymaking Board to do. And so, it's not unusual at all that these things lag behind the need for financing. So, eventually, you come up short, and you say, "We have to deal with it." That's pretty much why you're at this point.
Oh, trustee Jerome.
I just ask one follow-up question. So, I see, obviously, with the sewer MEUs, we had a reduced 75% because we wanted to have some more parity between the water and the sewer. Is, would that, how long would that be in place? Are we, is that-
For this fiscal year.
For this, so it'd be for this fiscal year that we-
Yeah, through March 31, 2022.
And one thing I just want to mention in response to trustee Corto's question about, you know, the financial burden and whether there are people who might be, you know, put in a real difficult position. One thing that we've talked about with the connection fees in particular, because that is a really big price tag for an individual homeowner, is to have some flexibility in terms of spreading out the cost when it's not a developer. You know, if it's a developer bringing in a subdivision, then they're in a position to sort of build that cost into the home, you know, the purchase price of the homes. And people can sort of, you know, you know, be prepared for it in a sense and spread that cost out over time through a mortgage. But if, if we, we may be in a position where we have people with existing homes within the water district that may have to go on to water if their water, their well water is no longer usable for whatever reason. And so, we wanted to have some flexibility for people in those circumstances to be able to spread it out, kind of like, you know, the option with an SAD for a road improvement, you can spread it out over a period of time. Same thing with the tap fee.
And we did that in the beginning of the system. Yes, and we affirmed that in the ordinance revisions that we adopted a couple of months ago, Jackie.
Can I just ask a quick clarifying question about the resolution? On page 100, there's all the whereas clauses, and then there's the table based on meter size. But then the next clause mentions that we hereby approve $118.92 to be applied and billed proportionally during the billing cycle. I, I guess I don't understand how that's really showing that that's a per MEU price. Is that, is that what's intended by the bill, proportionally? Or, I, I just heard the discussion that this will be proportional on the number of MEUs. And, and I'm not reading that in this, in this clause. So, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand clearly what this clause is saying.
Would you like me to answer how the math works?
Yes, please.
Okay. Proportionally, would, would, would lead to using the table at a single-family home, $118.92 for 1 MEU. And in practical application, you would take the $118.92 times 8 for a 2-inch commercial meter, and that would be the proportionality of it, yes.
So, so this is referring, so that factor based on 5/8 is, is what would be applied here? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, the factor, and I, I don't have the resolution up on my screen. But for anything 5/8s, 3/4 or 1-inch at a residential would be 1 MEU or $118.92.
And so, Steve, is, is your staff prepared to implement this if we were to pass this tonight?
Yes, we're going to work, Michael's our guru of setting that up in BSNA. So, we have a, a database with all the meter sizes in there that we currently have rates set up. So, you know, through, through his manipulation of that, we could put these rates in for the appropriate meter sizes.
Essentially, we would divide 118.92 by 3, and that would be per billing cycle. Sorry, by, by 4, I'm sorry.
Trustee Noel.
Yeah, I'm going to ask Steve if he could give us a little, little bit of an overview. I know most of the residential customers on the water and sewer system are in the southeastern corner of the township, but not all. Plus, there's Walnut Ridge, I'd like, and then out Jackson Road. So, I guess I'd like just a quick overview from you, Steve, as to who the residential customers would be, that would be impacted.
Yeah, so, so the greatest proportion, like you say, is in the southeast quadrant, which we call the uplands. A lot of residences in there. Walnut Ridge is a, a separate district, which doesn't have a lot of homes. I don't know how many exactly, but, and then we have what we call the Jackson Corridor. So, you know, and that includes, and will include, you know, the SIO View and Trailwoods, Polo Fields, and then Jackson, all the way out to Parker Road, and north to 94, and then south to Liberty, Liberty.
Do you have any idea how much a typical or an average home might increase in terms of their water or sewer bill with its resolution?
So, so with that last slide that Michael did, I believe showed a, kind of a typical home that's using, I think that was about 100 gallons per day, 9,000 gallons per quarter. Normally, the bill would be $229.42. The increase would be to $250.58. So, $21, which is just ballparking as, looks like about 9% increase. And this is per quarter, this is per quarter.
And Steve, the provision under number one is that the, you, the utilities director and finance director would work together to update these annually prior to April 1, which is great to have it just kind of coincide with fiscal year. Are you prepared to do that, or do you need any?
Yeah, nothing else.
What will it take to get that done right?
So, what we need to do is, you know, keep account on our, our MEUs. And then we need to look at what our, what our debt is. And, and, you know, we, we divide the debt by the number of, of MEUs. So, we, so we have a formula in place to do that equitably. If the debt was to go down, it's conceivable that, you know, the debt charge could go down to our customers. But, you know, we do have the methodology that Woodhill's putting in place. We're not quite done working with them, and I want to get a few things ironed out. And I really want to make things very clear on our website moving forward of what people are being charged, what they're being charged for, how that's being calculated, all those type of things. So, I'm hoping to work with Michael on that as well, because he's been, he's been very helpful.
Well, if there aren't any more questions or comments, we're going to open up to the public.
Okay, any public comment? And there are two proposed resolutions, so public comment on either. Janet Medaw, followed by Maureen Richards. Janet? Sorry, just a moment. Janet? Okay, Janet, hang tight. We're going to go on to Maureen Richards and come back to Janet. Maureen? Maureen?
Hi, sorry, I had unmuted. This is Maureen Richards. I just wanted to thank clerk Flintoff for the efforts in getting the finances in order. This kind of stuff as being debt and also coming out of the general fund is not good for taxpayers. And I think this is in line with her work in managing the finance department. And she's doing a fantastic job, and I'm sure she will continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Next up is Rob Pattinson. Rob?
Thank you. Many people in SIO Township are on city water because Delman poisoned their wells. That has turned into a very expensive cost for those property owners. I hope the township will include some form of discount for those owners who would otherwise be in a well if their wa, if their water wasn't still poisoned 40 years later. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Next up is somebody named iPhone. Hope that's not your given name, iPhone.
Thank you, Jessica. It's non-resident Alice Owings, and I, I cannot, I, I change my name every time on my Zoom info on my iPhone, and it reverts. I don't know what I'm doing wrong. I was just going to say, and, and that, as I understood, part of the reason for sort of, as, as trustee Jerome was asking about why this might have been kicked down the road, or, you know, kicking the can down the road as far as the budgetary, was that really the, the modeling around finances of the sewer was based on a commercial base of users, not as many residences. The original people that got hooked up were neighbors up Zed Road, actually, who got their water poisoned by the Washington County Road Commission, salt piles that leached into the water. And so, you know, it's my memory of, you know, my many years in the township that the township made an affirmative decision to help subsidize. And therefore, you know, as, as, you know, Woodhill and, and Steve have said, you know, they're short every month, every year, you know, in terms of everything. But that that had been an affirmative policy of the township to help out because people moved to the township for lower taxes, lower costs, et cetera. And then they got hit with that. And again, through no fault of their own, as, as Rob Pattinson was saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Alice. I see no other interested public. Will?
Well, in that case, we have before us two resolutions. Is there someone ready to move? Why don't we start with the, yeah, why don't we, why don't we do one of the, why don't we do the first, the, the water and sewer connection charge and methodology resolution? Is someone ready to move adoption of that resolution? Moved by Palmer?
Support?
Support by Flintoff. Are there any further comments or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Resolution adopted as presented.
That brings us to the second resolution. This is to establish debt service and water sewer rates and methodology. Is someone ready to move that resolution?
I'll move it again.
Moved by, you've been waiting to do this, I can tell.
Oh, for a long time, years.
Removed by Palmer, support by Flintoff again. Please call the roll.
Hathaway? Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Resolution adopted as presented.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you both for hanging in there until we got to this point on the agenda as well.
No problem.
That brings us to item K, which is public comment. We moved this when we adopted the agenda in front of J2. And this is a time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the Board of Trustees. Trustee Jerome will continue to serve as timekeeper. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board?
If so, please raise your Zoom hand, starting with Pam Boyd, followed by Rob Pattinson. Pam?
Good evening. Pam Boyd, 517 Linden Lane and Neighborhood Newsletter. I want to thank you for the movement forward on the Roads Committee, and I also want to thank you for moving public comments before closed session. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Pam. Next up is Rob Pattinson. Rob?
Thank you. I believe the fire inspection program is a massive public safety issue, and more importantly, not having an inspection program for 13 years means we're putting firefighters' lives at risk. Since it will take at least three years to get back to a complete coverage, I hope the Board of Trustees treats this as an emergency situation and acts as fast as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Any other interested public? There are no other interested members of the public. I want to thank the 20 people who have hung tight this long, and the next item is going to be, oh, I'm sorry, call it, Will. Excuse me. I went into the instruction.
Well, next item is possible action, consideration of purchase or lease of real property, which is one of the categories for which our board can go into closed session. Clerk Flintoff, would you like to read the?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to move into closed session pursuant to MCL 15.268 subsection D to consider the purchase of or lease of real property up to the time an option to purchase or lease that real property is obtained.
Support. So moved by Flintoff, support by Jerome?
No discussion.
There's no discussion. Please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Motion passes. Everyone, the board is now moving into closed session. The public, you are welcome to stay here, but when we come back, we will be taking no action of any discernible interest to the public, and there will be no other items on the agenda. The board will now leave and go physically into another room, and Kathy, please join via the closed session link that Wilson.
Recording stopped.